All right, welcome everyone. I'm Richie Ratzak, Assistant Managing Editor here at the Record Journal. Today, we're here for the Meriden City Council Area Four Candidate Forum. I'm joined by and with the people incumbent Bob Williams and Democratic challenger Ken Morgan. Also on the call is Mary Ellen Godin, the Record Journal reporter who'll be answering or fielding questions during the forum. So the format tonight, each candidate will get a one-minute opening statement. Then we ask a series of questions and both candidates will get one minute to respond and we'll alternate who answers first. I can give additional time at my discretion if we want to go deeper on any kind of topic. Or if you guys want to respond to any each other's comments, let me know in my discretion, I can give you extra time. Questions for the forum came from some came from the newsroom and some came from our Voices Initiative where we asked voters what they want the candidates to be talking about as they compete for their votes. Anyone watching can submit questions for upcoming candidate forums by going to myrecordjournal.com/voices. And for those watching on Facebook Live, I'll be keeping an eye on the comments. If you have any questions for the candidates, leave it in the comment section and we'll try to get to them as time allows. So we'll kick it off with the opening statements and Bob Williams, you're the incumbent, so kick it over to you first.
Okay, great, thank you. I want to thank the residents of Meriden for trusting in me over the last three terms. I've done what I could when called upon, and in some cases, the response may have been less than expected. But honesty is always the best policy. I met with work, I met and worked with a lot of city employees who care greatly about the city of Meriden. Without their support and their assistance, my job would have been impossible. Again, I thank them as well. And it goes to the chief as well. I want to thank the Republican Party for cross endorsing me once again. I wish to extend a gratitude of appreciation to Meriden Police Local 1016 for your endorsement. I know that Local 1016 almost never endorses a candidate and it doesn't come easy, but again, thank you. I've always said that I represent the people, not a party, and will continue to embrace these values moving forward. What you see is what you get. Thank you.
All right, Ken, then over to you.
Thank you. Again, thank you for the opportunity to be here for hosting this. Eight years ago, I made a choice to move to the East Coast for a job in Maryland, Connecticut. I had a choice at that time whether I moved to the city or lived in another city adjacent. But I chose to move to Meriden. One of the things that brought me to Meriden is the fact that it's a town very similar to what I grew up in, very similar in size. It's an eclectic town and I really love the way it's developing. I have 40 years in municipal service at various levels from a boot firefighter to a volunteer firefighter to working my way up through management, to spending time as the acting city manager and heading the second largest department in the city. So I've got a wide wealth of experience to bring to the table. I'm also involved in the community with Alliance Club and I am excited about the opportunity to represent not only Area 4, but the city of Meriden.
All right, thank you Ken, and then bring in Mary Ellen to asking the questions.
Hi, thank you both for joining us today. Um, I'd like to start with a question to Chief Morgan. Ken, you've received some public criticism over your choice to run for city council while leading the fire department. Some critics, including your opponent, have said that a department head should focus only on his leadership role within the organization. Others have asked how you could handle budgetary and personnel matters that come before the council. How do you address these concerns?
Well, it's actually pretty simple. Yeah, I'm the fire chief. Yes, I'm a department head. But the the job of a fire chief is a multitasking job. I do that every single day. When I became the acting city manager, I still ran the fire department, but I also ran the city, again, a multi-tasking assignment. So as far as the conflict, yeah, there might be some conflicts, but this was all vetted long before I decided to run. It's not the first time that something like this has come across the the table for the council to deal with. And essentially, it's fairly fairly simple. Budget will be separated out into the regular budget and the fire department budget. I'll be allowed to vote on everything but the fire department perspective of it, and I'll have to abstain from that part. Thus, eliminating the conflict there. And the same thing goes with personnel actions. Most of the personal actions we have are for adding adding staff or changing titles to staff. And we'll follow the same perspective for that.
All right, and then over to Bob, do you care to comment on that?
Well, I think I think my opponent said it said everything. I mean, he said that he acknowledges it could be a conflict. Again, if he was not the sitting fire chief or he elects to resign, I think he should run, but I think it's a conflict. How do you how do you have the city manager, who is his boss, talking to an employee who is also now his boss? It there's just too many, too many crossroads here. It just, it just doesn't, it just doesn't feel right. And again, nothing against my opponent. I think he's a good man, but I totally think it's absolutely a conflict of interest. Thank you.
All right, Mary Ellen, you want to go on with the next question?
Right, this one's for Bob first. Last month, the council approved capping the number of recreational cannabis dispensaries permitted in the city at three. Bob, you were not at that meeting and your vote on that isn't on the record. Can you please share your own views on recreational marijuana now that it's legal in Connecticut? And how to regulate the establishment that sell those products? Do you agree with the local regulations the council approved last month?
Yes, I do, and I'll go a step further. You're going to have cannabis distilleries, if you will, dispensaries, probably in most towns throughout the state of Connecticut. Quite frankly, I don't know if Meriden needs any of them, not one. Now, if we want to have a manufacturer or a grower who distributes outside the area, but I just don't know that we need one, especially when one of the locations in question is in our downtown area. So three, if if, I mean, again, I think there needs to be a lot more discussion on this issue. But in my mind, I'm fine if we have zero in the city of Meriden. Again, I want to be very clear, though, if there is a manufacturer, for the sake of a better word, or a grower, who is going to be a distributor for Connecticut or New England, that's a different, that's a different conversation. But I don't necessarily think we need one in the city of Meriden. Thank you.
All right, Ken, and over to you, your thoughts.
We're going to have marijuana in the city, whether we like it or not. It's it's here now and it's at the point that now that we can actually regulate it a little bit, I think it's going to help us not only with the crime end of it, but it'll also allow us to control it a little bit more. I like the fact that they capped it at three. I think that, again, that that's part of that control. It gives us an objective look at it without getting overloaded with this. And we can take a look and adjust as we need to without having to confront a lot of people. We, you know, if we limit it to three, again, it's going to be here whether we want it or not. I think with the ability to control it and and watch what's going on with it and restrict it, that will be a benefit to the city and potentially bring in some new taxpayers.
All right, Mary Ellen, I'm going to go with the next question. I would go to Ken first.
Okay, what item the council will be asked to take up is a recommendation from its Public Safety Committee regarding the formation of a civilian review board to review public use of force incidents. If this item were to come before you, how would you vote? Please explain your rationale.
Well, as I mentioned in in the letter that I sent in, I'm truly on the fence here. And there's a variety of reasons, and I'm going to go with the positive side first. We have an outstanding police department. I work with them, maybe not every day, but quite often. I see how they work from the other side. I know the things that they're up against. I know that the Internal Affairs Bureau does an exceptional job of investigating things and that their that their outcome goes to the chief, and I have full faith in Chief Rosado in dealing with them appropriately. So that makes me want to shy away from it. My biggest concern with this whole process is that of transparency. And we currently have a situation where in the past, we've had issues with transparency. So I'm truly on the fence with this. I think as a transparency perspective, it's probably good. But I'm not 100% sure we actually needed it this time.
All right, Bob, over to you.
I'm sorry?
And your response to the question?
Well, yeah, thank you. I think I'm pretty clear. You know, I sat on the committee. I really want to give kudos to the committee. I mean, they put in months and months and endless hours of work. So this is probably one of the hardest committees, hardest working committees I've ever been on in my my professional life. So they put in a lot of work. I'm against it. It's very simple. The facts that came before us in every single instance did not show us or support the need for a civilian review board. On the other side of the equation, we have a public safety committee. That should be the avenue or an avenue to which the citizens or business or anyone that has a question should move or gravitate towards. Over my almost 12 years on the Public Safety Committee, I never had one individual or resident come before us with any of these challenges, but I think that's the vehicle that we should use to deal with or not deal, but address any citizen concerns.
Okay. Another public safety that has come to the public's attention is staffing shortages at the city's emergency communication center. According to officials, the center, when fully staffed, employs at least 12 full-time dispatchers. As of mid-September, the center had six full-time dispatchers with other city public safety personnel covering dispatcher shifts. What role can the city council play in addressing the ongoing staffing shortage?
And that goes to Bob first.
Yeah, thank you. Well, first off, my hat goes off to the fire department. They they have stepped in and they've done a, they've done a great job pulling this department back together, if you will. There are things, folks, that I cannot really discuss because the council has addressed these questions on an ongoing basis in executive session. So I'm limited on the conversation with regards to this fully, and I want to be very clear on that. I will share with you that on a personal note, it is a major concern for our firefighters or hunters and all of our, all of our first responders. So I am very, very concerned about this, just as everyone in the city of Meriden is. And I will tell you that the city manager is working feverishly to try to close these gaps. And again, my hat goes off to the fire department for their involvement in this process. They've really pulled us out of the out of the weeds. So that's, that's all I really have to say on this issue. Thank you.
And Ken, over to you.
Well, the staffing process in dispatch is a long tedious process. And yeah, they're understaffed and and yeah, we have stepped up, fire department has stepped up. But again, it's a long process from the time you hire and interview a candidate and put them through training. You're talking four to six months minimum. It is not exactly the easiest environment to work with. You're dealing with people that are having crises and they're expecting you to sit on the other end of a phone and answer them. And that goes for the fire guys and the police guys. They're not just a different client for the dispatch center. Currently, they have, I believe, six full-time employees. They've got a couple of part-time employees and I know they've got four, five in training. We just did orientation for the fire department end of it for three new ones. So the process is ongoing, but it's not something we're going to fix overnight. The firefighters have stepped in. We've actually had a couple of more go through the training and they're in the process of holding, holding down as much as they can until which time the staff gets up to a full staffing again. And I think the process is in works now. There's some other things, as Bob had mentioned, that we're working on. But we're getting it, we're heading in that direction.
Okay.
Could I, can I comment on that? I mean, is that acceptable?
Yeah, we can give you another 30 seconds.
I don't even need that. I probably just need 10. But you know, I think one of the options that, you know, should maybe be considered at some point is maybe putting this department under the purview of the fire department. So again, I don't think that's really been looked at to any great degree. But, you know, we should really explore all of our options that we may have available to us. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, I guess this goes to Ken. As you well know, the West Side recently lost a supermarket. And due to a loophole in the city zoning regulation, it's getting dozens of self-storage units in its place. The new use has angered many residents who say the West Side is lacking retail development. Are you satisfied with current economic development and commercial activity in that area? And if not, do you have any suggestions for a way to improve it?
You know, I don't think we'll ever be satisfied with it. Anytime we get new businesses in, it's good. It may not be the business we would like to have there. We lost a grocery store that was big on that side, but we've got a taxpayer coming in. So that's, that's a positive for the city. In the interim, we've got a commitment from Aldi to build another grocery store on that side of town, which is really good. That will help us a lot. But the economic development is going to be going on for several years. It didn't go away overnight. It's not going to come back. We just have to keep on fighting, keep on working for this. Keep on improving our city's infrastructure. That's things that they invite people into the city. And we'll see it come back. I feel positive that we're heading in the right direction.
Bob, over to you.
Yeah, thank you. Listen, I totally agree with the remarks of my opponent. He said it perfectly. I mean, there's really not much to add to that, other than maybe we may have to, in some cases, look at some tax incentives. But again, all these is aggressively looking at our West Side, if you will. And again, we have an Economic Development Director. He's working feverishly to make things happen. He has the support of the council. But again, I think Ken, I totally agree 110% what Ken said. I would have said the same thing. But something does need to take place. And again, we cannot dictate. I know there's a storage facility in there, which, quite frankly, I'm not crazy about. But they own the property. They're not doing anything outside the zoning regulations. And sometimes you just have to grin and bear it, even though it's certainly not what I wished for either.
Okay, this one goes to Bob. What will be your priorities in the upcoming council term?
Right now, my, listen, a heavy priority for me are my number one, you asked number one priority. So my number one priority right now is public safety. It's very simply put. Supporting our men and women in blue, certainly our firefighters, all of our first responders. It appears right now to be the flavor of the day to, you know, really attack these men and women or certainly give them a hard time over the job and the performance they do. So I am an incredibly strong advocate. I stand shoulder to shoulder with them and I'll do everything I can. And I will also make sure, and again, I want to be very clear with this next statement. There has been no talk about this, but I will never defund the police department or our fire department in any way, shape or form. So my number one priority is the Meriden Police Department right now. Thank you.
And Ken, over to you.
Well, I do have to agree that I think the probably the single most important thing is supporting public safety because they set the tone for making the city as positive as it is. And I am with them. I support the the police department. I obviously support the fire department, but we have to support dispatch and everybody that supports us. It's not just the police and the fire department that deal with our public safety. It's, it's the highway department, roads department, water department. So we have to support all of those. The real thing that I think we need to keep pushing hard for is economic development because that's what's going to give us the ability to support all these people. We keep pushing. We're getting it. It's coming slowly but surely. And I know people say Chick-fil-A, oh, big deal. That's big. Getting somebody to come in and build something from scratch in this city is a positive look. And if you look around town, we see it in all areas. And now we've got to keep pushing for, even if it's little by little, we'll get it done. And that'll let us focus on our other priorities.
Do we have any reader questions?
None that we haven't addressed of already.
Okay, I can push forward. The city of Meriden has already received a portion of more than $36.3 million in federal funds through the American Rescue Plan Act in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Those funds have stipulations attached. They must be used in one of five categories. Supporting public health expenditures, addressing the negative economic impacts caused by the public health emergency, investing in water, sewer and broadband infrastructure, premium pay for essential workers and replacing lost public sector revenue. A committee tasked with recommending use of funds has begun reviewing applications for proposed initiatives that would be funded through ARP. What types of initiatives would you prioritize?
This goes to Ken first.
As far as ARP funds go, there are a variety of things. I think we have to look at the small businesses and how was it, how they were affected. They, they are little key players in the city and they make this city the what it is. So we need to take a look at that. We need to take care of our first responders. And by that, I'm not just talking about police and fire. Obviously, we take care of them. But we've got to take care of the other people that were out there. The health district workers, the social workers that were out there, the people that worked in the grocery stores without the support of those kind of funds. So we need to take a look at that. And finally, the COVID and infectious disease prevention part of it, we need to bolster that. So all if we can work on getting all of those done, we could focus the remainder of the funds on other projects that might be less important or a less of a priority, but just as important.
All right, and Bob, over to you.
Yeah, again, I totally agree with my opponent. He, there's, there's just no disagreement. I mean, how do you, how do you slice this pie? Small business is a big one for me. You know, these people have gotten hurt in a big way through their business. And again, a lot of them are just one or two pop shop organizations. I'm thinking about Village Mart in South Meriden, Four Corners Pizza. They've gotten hit very, very hard. So I see those folks as probably right at the top of that list. I also think our, our nonprofits, and I want to be very clear on this, are veterans nonprofits. I don't see that they fall into the this bucket, if you will, which is very troubling to me that nonprofits like the American Legion, the PLAV, they've gone through a very critical time in their operation when they've had to shut down, be it a canteen they were operating or rental of their hall or grounds. So those are just some of the additional areas that I think are critical.
All right, Mary Ellen, you want to go on to the next question?
Yep. Okay, I guess this is Bob. What is your assessment of the city's handling of the COVID-19 pandemic? How has the city performed in the areas of providing access to public health and access to city government during the pandemic? In your view, has the city struck an appropriate balance between managing a public health crisis and insurance running, ensuring residents are able to access their city government?
I think Meriden has done an exceptional job. You know, we, none of us have lived through a pandemic. I mean, it was all new, new ground for us, new water we were in. So I think certainly there were probably some growing pains at first because, you know, no one knew which way to turn. But but I think the Health Department has done an exceptional job getting the message out along with city government. When you talk about the city government, I don't know if you mean access to city hall. But if that is the case, again, it was a challenge. We didn't know how contagious this disease was. At one point, you were led to believe that if you look at somebody wrong, you're going to get COVID. As this disease progressed or this pandemic progressed, we got a better understanding and a better grasp of it. But 100%, 200%, the city did a phenomenal job as well as all our department heads working in collaboration. So absolutely 310% unbelievable job.
Ken, over to you.
Yes, we did an excellent job. The city went into a crisis mode and we started looking towards the leadership in the city. We talked to Leah, we talked to the state, we came up with a plan. Some people might have thought the plan was overkill and, but it wasn't. It was based on sound science, what was going on and the fact that this crisis changed daily, not only for how we dealt with it as first responders, but how the city dealt with it and with not knowing exactly how it was going to be spread, how fast it could be spread, how you could carry it, how you could transmit it. So the unknown was the biggest issue here. And I think, yeah, we, people might have thought the city went into overkill. But personally, having lived through that, we did an exceptional job as, as a city as a whole. We followed the science. When vaccinations were available, we went into a that, a mass vaccination mode. Again, the fire department stepped up and helped with that. So we got that done. It was just an exceptional response and I'm very proud of how the city handled it.
All right, and then I'll go over to one of our, the Voices questions that came in around flooding in the downtown area. You know, over the summer, we had another major storm that caused some flooding and several cars had to get towed. The question is, you know, the city has all had had all kinds of flooding, mitigation projects in the works. But we're still seeing, you know, residents in the downtown area had to have cars towed. They're so damaged to property. What role should the city council have in continuing these projects? And will people ever be, you know, free of the problem of flooding or is this something that's always going to be an issue in the downtown area? I think that goes to Ken first.
Okay. No, I do believe it. Sometime in the future, we'll be able to mitigate that. The problem is not that the green didn't do what it was supposed to do. It's the downstream stuff that we're trying to fix now. We've got the Cooper Street Bridge. It's going, it's nearing completion, should be done in a few more months. There's another bottleneck down the stream from that. And once we get all that infrastructure in place, it's expected that all of that will go away. Again, the green filled up. It did exactly what it was supposed to. But that bottleneck kept it from draining as fast as it should have. And once that's addressed and some of the lower lying areas down there are taken care of, we shouldn't see this issue. Again, we've been working on this as long as I can remember, at least eight years. And we've probably got three or four or more years still to complete the project. So we'll just hope we don't get a heck of a lot of rain at any little bit of a time. And if we do, we kind of know where to go look. So it'll take time, but we'll get it done.
All right, Bob, over to you.
You know what? That's a million dollar question. That truly is. I mean, we've invested millions and millions of dollars. And every time we do, or certainly we're privy to a conversation as a council or even as a citizen, well, this will resolve it. And again, I would agree with my opponent. The green has certainly helped. And he would know better than anyone because we certainly have apparatus stationed on Pratt Street. And I understand it receded very, very quickly, even though I wasn't physically there. I don't know. I don't know where the answer is here. I mean, you talk to a lot of the old timers from the city and they say, listen, if we just got out there and we, we started cleaning the stream from top to bottom with some equipment, that would make a tremendous impact. I think about Co Avenue and Bradley, that cul-de-sac there. I mean, we have trees growing in there. One side is almost impassable. So I don't know. I truly don't. I think we just need to get out there and we need to see what we can do to actually get into this waterway and clean it on a regular basis. Thank you.
All right, and so we're coming up on the half hour mark, so we'll move on to the closing statements. Thank you both of the candidates for joining us today and letting their readers hear your thoughts. So for closing statements, we, since we went with Bob first, we'll have Ken go first with the closing statements.
No, thank you. And again, I want to thank you for the opportunity to do this. I want to thank Bob. No, thank you. And again, I want to thank you for the opportunity to do this. I want to thank Bob for uh coming up and and participating this also. We I see opportunities in Meriden and I I I have a new perspective. I'm an outsider coming in here eight years ago. I've embraced the city as my own city. I have a different perspective on it. Um I can bring a different perspective to the council that that others can't. I have an extensive knowledge of the inside operations of the city as as only a city manager would. Uh a city manager is a terrifying job. There's a lot going on with that, but it gives you a whole new perspective on the city. I have over forty years in public service. Um uh it's varied in in different capacities up to and including a city manager and a department head of a large department. I came from a department that had six hundred uh firefighters. So I've got a different perspective. And I have a personal vision for the city. I do believe this city is gonna grow. I do believe it will come back. I do not believe it's gonna happen in the next two or three or four years, but it will come back and we need to keep plugging in that direction.
Now to Bob, closing thoughts.
Yeah, again, I I I want to thank uh you, you Richie and Mary Ellen and and certainly the chief uh for being here. It was it was really a great dialogue and it was respectful on both sides, so I want to thank you. Uh my platform, uh again, Economic Development Seniors. Uh I support referendum. I I think on large ticket items, there has to be a referendum. And I support zero. I want to be very clear on that. And I don't know if we can make this happen, but zero housing on the Meriden Green. I will continue to be a strong advocate for public safety. Again, I want to thank the hundred men and women from the Meriden Police Department who endorsed me along with other individuals and other professionals in public safety individuals throughout the city. Thank you for backing me and I proudly stand shoulder to shoulder with you and have your back as well. I never pretended to have all the answers. I've always listened and did my best. I'm asking you for your support once again. And America needs your vote. Please vote Row E. And I'm very, very proud to be a part of Meriden. It's a great city and I'm also very proud to be an American. Thank you.
All right, once again, thanks to both the candidates for joining us today and thanks for everyone that was watching. We have two more um candidate forums coming up tonight. That's so stick around. At six o'clock, we have the Mayoral Candidates and then at seven o'clock, we have the City Council at Large Candidates. So we will be back in just a few minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.